That should be that. If I go like this. Really what it look like? Okay. Cause this is just to present one case. 701 Kathy's running late.
Recording in progress.
Just make sure you give me. Are you got? Are you muted?
Yeah.
And your speaker's down. Tony, you're not on Zoom, are you?
No, I'm not on Zoom.
And on the.
Tech savvy people over here.
Yeah, this is the one that I want to use. Yeah.
Not leaning anymore Lorenzo.
Um.
Feeling better?
Am I what?
Your knee.
Oh no, I'm feeling much better. Much, much better. So let's just see. Hello, hello. Uh down the software. Alright. We have one. I don't know if it was three, three for one.
Yeah.
You have me so I can share, right?
Uh I think so. Uh which uh your photo or one of the kids doing?
My photo. This was my solution. Was. It crisscrossed the line.
I'm just gonna make you the host so you can do it.
Okay.
It says he's not the host.
That's good. Be along. Town was, which is has invested in all of this material. Cameras and everything, but uh they're all on there. All you need is an hour, it's a thousand dollars.
Well, you know, when I did this, I did this when we had our foundation.
Yeah.
In uh, can we do some like uh Julie put up for me? We had these two. We had all, we had five people sitting over there. We had the big monitor, gigantic monitor over here. And you could, the people could see all five people that were doing the meeting. And you could see this thing called a video, get under box, that's simple thing, cameras on the top. Microphone and speaker, and if you're speaking, and then you start speaking, it'll still speak. And also then you have five. They're gonna spend a fifty thousand dollars.
Alright. Let's get, uh, let's get this party started. Jason, thank you for joining us tonight. This is a lot easier at work when they have three uh. Alright, so here we go. That was the book. So uh first thing going ahead, approval for the meeting minutes of July what?
Uh July 4th.
Alright. Well, this is a meeting. Okay, any additions to the agenda? Oh, so. We're here in motion protocol moment now, so July 4th.
Uh, I don't like the numbers.
Any second?
Uh we must be.
Alright.
Pushing them.
Only.
Caitlin, Shipton, Daisy.
Shipton, Dana Ford. Uh maybe we should just. Caitlin. Organize meeting. Second by Aaron. All favor, alright? They post. Okay, so now. We have the approval minutes, we have to do that, see if we'll again, pass that survey. Uh any additions to the agenda? Okay, the only change is I wasn't able to get in touch with mine, I lost the message yesterday. I just, I had slipped my mind beforehand, and I've heard from her back, but yeah, so we will continue. I left a message saying that uh, yeah, we hope that he would bring his talents and his skillset. Uh back to the commission, uh directly, not indirectly, and we love to have that conversation. And again, we hope that uh that will continue. So, to start on the whole business, we have the calendar of events for Bat Fest, so we have the week, actually the uh. We'll talk forward, Jason, just later. We're planning on doing several events, which we've done with the uh. With the library. So the book is, Aaron, do you have the name of the book? Aaron, uh grandmother is a bat?
Yeah, her grandma is a bat, something like that.
So they do, they do two story walks every month. The first one will be the National Geographic Kids' um edition of Bat on Bats. And that will get us ready for Bat Month, and then the fun one for Halloween scare walk. Would be great, and she said that she had a ton of ideas um to do that.
It was a twenty, it was a four.
So now, what we need to do tonight, is we need to uh figure out what that schedule is gonna be.
So uh. In the minutes from last month, I had said that I was going to talk to Anne Asturita and ask them, what are the two dates that they had, as they could be. Um and she said the night they could do, and um John Smeida. Um he can.
He can.
He will do, yeah, he will do the hype that might involve the bats. He's actually, uh, answered, he's quite knowledgeable.
Okay.
Um about them and.
So is the tractor parade the second opening?
I don't know, I haven't seen it yet either, in order.
Yeah, there was. Or it being.
But it was split times to do it, in track, we had it for the evening morning.
Uh one of the things we were talking about morning is the, on the tractor parade, trying to get folks to, that do uh. Books, to have a, a bat team. Now, the whole thing, this is our first year doing this. It's a great idea, we have a lot of great ideas swarming around, and we have, we don't have as many volunteers as we may need to make all these go. But we want, I'd rather see us do a couple things very well, than try to do everything unless we can recruit others, right? So what we know we wanna do is the Bat House Build.
We did get a phone call to do the coffee shop. And I mean, I mean, I'm.
Awesome.
The, the grownups.
Yeah.
We can help and stuff like that. I just wanna get back to you, we got a date, timeline for them, so.
Well, so the things that we wanna do are the story walk, the scare walk, right? We want to do the uh Bat House Build. And we can do the Bat House Build the same day as the um. The tractor parade. But we can't do the tractor parade, the Bat House Build, and the night hill walk on the same. Same day. So we kinda need to know what they had a fact.
I'm putting your email, I have, I'll put something as the tractor parade.
Yeah, somebody, and I don't know where I got that. Okay, I'm pretty sure that that's the tractor parade, if we have.
Yeah. And then the ninth of the Bat House Build, the sixteenth of this season. Um I reached out to a contact, I've been doing, and she gave me the name, she didn't have a contact in 21, she gave me the name. She's a state conservationist, a rehabilinator, known as a bat owner, just, she's an amazing person, but not find contact, so from anywhere, so I will be trying.
And she's supposed to give me the name, it might be the same. He's been, the zoo, if anybody knows, bears in the zoo, the state decided that uh we should be free to some, for children. They've been able to work out the way that they felt. Got one parent, high school kids. Um, so, what do we wanna do next?
Well, let me ask you, the zoo, um, the one thing I think could be a little problematic is the, the Bat House Build. And putting this, because um, you, you really need somebody, that's kind of, think of like a submarine operation.
We need volunteers.
I don't know whether we'd allow, if we still have that, I don't know, how you know.
So a Bat House is, is basically is supposed to resemble the, the space between the park and the body of the. So it's like a skinny, so just imagine like a birdhouse, but wow. And the bat, that's how the bats go. So we have a Bat House that could take part, and we're looking for volunteers in town to cut the pieces before the event. So that we basically have a bunch of kits. And then we just have to have an assembly line.
Put it together.
Kill them together. So to answer your question, you don't need to make it. How many do we wanna make?
Well, if, I'll tell you.
No, without all the.
I think we can get, you, you can get Bat House plans on the web.
Yeah.
They're not gonna be as fancy as the.
Oh, that one looks fancy.
Oh, that's very smooth.
Well, that, that had some, that had some uh complicated cuts, at least for me. I just, I looked at it, it had several bad use. Design problems.
Yeah.
That a skilled woodworker could do. If I did it, it would be like, probably taking three days.
Well, the idea was gonna be to have, to separate the first.
Yeah, I know.
And so that one person's just making, just building a jig and.
I know, yeah, but to, uh, to do that, you gotta get all these people together, these three, but I'm gonna start this. And then all the four pieces have to stick together. One guy cuts it a little off.
Well.
Then the other guy, it's not gonna fit, so, you know.
It's a little bit off, I mean, it's a bat house.
Yeah, I know, but it, I mean, we're just courting the possibility of, you know, it's not gonna fit at all, I think I will. Especially if you get hardwood too, to put this thing together.
Make them.
I said, hey, I bet if he's good, he's probably gonna do all.
Yeah, that's, that's the point, the goal was to try to crowd people from the community, not us. To crowd people from the community and get them involved. I don't foresee any problems.
Okay.
Uh I zero. Because if we get volunteers.
If we get volunteers, like, it's one guy who's, and then they're stupid.
Well, we don't know, but even if he doesn't, I mean, that, it made it a phone call. Because, granted, this was in one email, you know, and it's a car away, and people don't know you, but we need to do is just, first we got to decide where you do it. If you build it, though.
Yeah, I could give uh, uh, Mark Olivia, is it? He could fill there. He's got the license. Oh, it's a big as a box, he probably knows it's still coming.
Yeah. And then, if anybody had, the nice part about the chasing, that a lot of people have, a lot of small pieces of it. So the hope is that there's folks that have cut pieces and stuff like that, that they can actually, that they can get the lumber. Well, that's what I'm saying, if you have scrap woods, you know, the people who are gonna cut them, if they also have scrap woods, that'll come down on them. We have some budget.
Well, that, that was, another thought I had, is we have money, we have a budget, we have to beat them, we could, as a backup thing.
Yeah.
We could buy some more back.
I would rather have that be a last resort or plan B, just because there's so much benefit in bringing the community together, and that, the Boy Scouts, you know, this would be a perfect.
Got three kids. I got three kids, we're gonna.
Yeah, the hands of, yeah, yeah, I think that's right. But again, this kind of, I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of surround this back. First question has been won. Number eight is, and then we'll create a committee to actually work the problems, right? And then they're gonna figure it out, they're gonna deliver it, they're gonna crowd the people, and at one point, they say, this is not doable. But it's great, we have a backup, so you could, well, order on Amazon, think.
How much, how much do you get that much cost?
So.
How many do you get?
So, that's the Bat House, what's the date?
I think because it's a more, the twin thing, then we can find out the other things that are scheduled, the tractor parade.
Yeah, and we want us to schedule that the same day as the.
Bat House Build, it could be an activity down at the park.
That's what I'm thinking, tractor parade, so tractor parade finishes, everybody goes to Apple Lake.
Yeah.
You know, and if you have load, you take one home.
I think that's first, first of all. If you go to.
Is it?
Park, my fault. If you go.
Um, I suppose, I mean, probably the last time I dogged him, it could be six, nine, I think.
Probably he's gone, I think not.
On the tractor parade?
Uh on the, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so we could just thumb that date up, and if they don't have anything afterwards, then we can buy, if we don't happen to buy a Bat House, we can buy ice cream, candy, and whatever else.
Yeah, we also, uh, I keep going online, I, I noticed it, putting this up, and then there's instructions, protocol, ways to firm how I.
Yeah, we can print out instructions, people are taking them off, we're not gonna hang them.
No, I.
Yeah, the idea is to, and what we wanna do is we wanna educate people and say, this is a Bat House, you can buy their farm level, like a print, and so on. Well, we can, we can okay the inside.
No, I wasn't thinking the inside, I was just wondering the outside.
So.
For people who do it on.
You're on a game. Um, alright, so calendar events, Bat Fest.
So let me preserve, October 2nd, we put tractor parade slash Bat House Build in, in a custom mark.
Right.
And we'll check in. The ninth, I would say, two walk, because Anne and Barbara and John said, yep, we can do that, and let us know, we'll put out something, yeah, wow, stuff.
We should try to crowd Elliot. You're ready for my help. We should, as soon as we have that thumbed up, we should go to my help of the story, and see if they'll do something with this. He's right there. I don't know what. And Land Trust is right there. You know, maybe we can help publicize the Land Trust. Uh, so that leaves the sixteenth, twenty-third, and forty. We know what the story walk is, is that on the twenty-third, I believe?
Uh, I think she did them every, yeah, I thought she said the twenty-third, we look in the minutes. Um, so, yeah, I think it's easier.
We don't have to do something on the sixteen. Okay.
Well, sixteen could be the lecture for.
Yep. If we saw, we'll put that in, that airplane.
Yep.
As the lecture, and then the, the thirty is the trunk or treat, right?
Yep.
And then we can decide if we got the bandwagon at the end of the day, if we wanna do something for trunk or treat, or wanna set up a booth or something. Alright? We can hand out instructions. Okay, unfortunately Jessica did contact us and let us know that she wasn't feeling well tonight, so especially with where everything is, you don't feel well, so I was hoping she would uh jump on.
Um, so I'm just gonna put it here, like, it's not, not here, we'll take what's.
Yeah, just table it for next time. That's gonna be the five G bill, and the recycling in town, did everybody, did everybody see the last recycling, has anybody been up to the dock?
Yeah, they had the last recycling, they didn't see the, the body.
I didn't see that, and I think that, I think when it comes, it'll be announced, it hasn't been announced. But they had somebody involved in the log and talk. I forgot the name of the place.
The, the.
Their place, the recycling place.
H R A, East Conic?
Yeah, East Conic. Uh, and they were given instructions, out, chopskies and things like that, but I thought that was kind of cool.
And they, they have a website that uh, and go there and you can say, you can put in whatever it is you don't know, and they'll tell you where it goes.
So, yeah, we definitely want to promote that, and uh, there's a call next week with um. One of the cleanup facilities, it was something like that, Aaron, you remember the name of that, uh, Clean USA or something?
Oh, that sounds great, one of Barbara's.
Yeah. Alright, next is, litter free. Oh, hold on, Keep America Beautiful. So the call, uh, the call is on the eighteenth at two o'clock, if anybody's interesting, interested in being on that call, I can send them the uh meeting information and how to register.
Right, the first idea that I said, we're gonna do that.
I just heard about it today, I'm telling you about it now, if you want me to send it to us, I don't know, would you? No, I don't really either, it's like, you get on the conference call, um, but it's about litter free initiatives.
Okay.
So I think, I think what that is, is uh. Going around town and organizing cleanup days. But again, I'll report back next, uh, next month. And then Barbara also asked us if we were going to continue with sustainable Connecticut project. And that will be more in my time, does anybody know what we're doing, Jessica, unfortunately, we're personally gonna have to question you. So she's not here, so we'll make it, put it in the minutes, ask Jessica for an update next month.
What do we do some, like a.
Yeah, I would be speculating. I was hoping to ask Jessica tonight.
What, what, I, I question you, what, what did I try to, this is definitely.
So what's sustainable, so it is?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, that's why I'm gonna jump on. But again, if you want me to send that to you, I'm more than happy to share that information.
Okay.
Uh, actually, Aaron, you wanna just put that in the minute, we'll put it in the meeting minutes. Uh, the website says to register. So Joey's Trail Meet. So we uh went down to Trail, um, and. Yeah, so basically, I'll give it a little bit.
So we went down there, we weren't coming in basically, so I was thinking that um, people would have parked out all the natives, because it's easier to uh. Park out the. It's just like, it's a whole bunch, I mean, it works for them to clean out every single invasive, you have an empty trail. But things that are just invading the trail, like the bittersweet and, and everything like that, you know, the prickly stuff that kids can just scrape themselves on, poison ivy. Um, there's some fallen trees down there, and that little boot might just climb and wander off the trail, so, I mean, it's not that bad, it's beautiful, they've done a great job.
No, so, um, two years ago, August, we went in there and put it all up.
Yeah.
Um, I actually did it back, we put the, we were in the fourth, around half most.
Wow.
Two, three, four.
Yeah.
And then um, March of twenty twenty, the one market, the spell project from there, we put in the water in front, part of it. Um, we did a whole bench area, and also we provided a few new kind of woodchips. And up cedar, down cedar trees, the buttress, the side of the trail, that were lower, and then up cedar, uh, here, the little chips, the one that went out, everything.
It's really, really good stuff.
No, they did a really, really, really good job, they were in there for the whole day. Um, but, you know, I have a bunch of kids in the pack, 'cause I run the pack damage group.
Okay.
So I got fifteen older kids, and probably twenty-five little kids, and they could probably run through this and all.
So is this something we, that you'd like to do in the next couple weeks, four?
We'll figure it. You, you, I mean, well, I'll just, I'll probably give it out, I think that's okay. So I'm just going there to win the afternoon, because we have a package, we're doing six and seven, and I'll just have them show up.
The only thing that we wanna make sure is that the, not that Caitlin and Boven did.
Yeah.
Been marking the invasives.
Yeah.
So one of the things we're talking about is spending some of that money on more natives, or whatever the right.
And that's why I was hoping that we would be able to mark some of the natives, so when we come in, you know, there's that some material on that, nobody recognizing some of that stuff, like.
Like what we did two years ago, is where they would push the rail back where it was shipping.
Yeah.
That, you know, so it just, it's nice, you know, and it's walkable, and then just like, if there's like prickers or something like that, we would just.
And that's what I was concerned with the ninth, or the Halloween walk, is that, you know, it's gonna be getting dark, right, and then there's gonna be so.
Okay, I, I don't know if you have the bandwagon to do this, but I think this would be educational for kids as well, and for any other volunteers that might come help, maybe you can break it in two days. It, because we're trying to get as much of the community involved as possible, especially because we have new members that, that, you know, don't know how to get involved, and that just could look. That easy door to go through, which this could be. Um, you think you'd be able to create like a pamphlet, like a PDF and say, implant, battle plant, inch.
I think you talked so good about it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll do a lot of this.
Yeah, exactly.
And mark anything invasive, or, you know.
Yeah, we marked.
And then we'll literally just press the rail back.
Yeah, I mean, we marked what was invasive, and obviously, like, it would take a whole yard of vines to mark what's invasive, but we, you know, like the water berries, that.
But if it's prickers coming in, we'll pick that up.
Yeah, the, the, so although, I guess maybe I'll contact Boven and ask to go through the right, just to put smart the natives instead of the invasive. Maybe we can do that, make.
Like, Steve Mark literally just pops us through some, literally just got it, put them all up.
Joe, do you wanna, do you wanna tell us the way you're gonna do that, or do you, can you look at it kind of?
Can I know you that? No, just, 'cause I have a, make the. No, just because I have a, made the direction, put it back to Roxbury, for the Stargate and the thing, uh, night. Because the, it's the troop, the only kids working on America.
Where are you gonna go play in?
Kind of what? That's what we do about the weather. Ronnie, so eight, nine, ten.
Yeah, eight.
Yeah, eight, nine, ten.
Maybe I know, it's a little Wednesday, what, what time of the day, Mike?
Like six o'clock, seven?
Eight AM?
All of them.
I didn't know.
It gets in the morning. Uh, tell me.
It could be dark by eight o'clock.
Yeah, no, no, we probably, we probably start at six thirty, then I'd have the older kids directing. But yeah, we've done them before, and it's been five, it's been a century. In that trailer, I hear.
So I think this is, again, we can make it kind of educational too. And um, I think it'll be good for, for folks and, you know, maybe we could make them go nice enough and have a PDF.
Yeah, I mean, if, if he's thinking, I'm thinking, you know, in like end of September, if we do it now, then it's gonna go back. And I don't have, yeah, I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure he'd do, but to get that um, bullet made and make it nice.
Well, if it's on Wednesday night, I mean.
It's certainly successful.
Can we make it a meeting night?
Then have Togo come down and point out like natives. After all, let's make our next meeting, if Togo would like to, and then.
Yeah, if I use there, it's like a big now, big now.
We can do that and then have the team.
Yeah, that's fine, you know, just, just know, know, they'll literally go through and just.
And then if you don't, it might not.
And if they like the.
Oh, my gosh.
And then the other question, would you guys get to go to the little garden, community garden behind the?
Near the theater center?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been needing that.
Okay, so you didn't, you don't need help with that?
No, there's some bittersweet that I could find, I don't know how, you know, there's like anything that's supposed to be to help, um, the posts are kind of falling down and. On the bittersweet's taking the wire down, but my plan was to go in there this week and just sort of drop off the bittersweet.
Um, take pictures, send me.
Oh, yeah, oh, definitely.
They got, I have uh, five kids who are in high school right now in the troop.
Oh, they need, yeah, they need more.
And we have them, we just still, still fair enough.
Yeah, oh, yeah, it's just the post.
Then, you know, I, I have one kid that's, you know, he's gonna have the E V S dot project now, and it's gonna be. Yeah, my, my son is actually, he's, he's gonna do E V S dot project in two five. But I have two other kids. That was Mark's E V S dot.
All right, well, this, this is a good conversation. This actually might uh, be something that could become a project at some point. And this is uh, in respect to your time, you have time to hang out.
Yeah, my company, the actual store's on the bus.
If this goes out, then you can uh. All right. Uh, I'll agree with you. Right, awesome. Well, you know, the, the, the hope is that by the time, we gotta get rid of that, is some, that they'll figure it out, right? The lifespan on this particular one is twenty-five years. And I thought, if I make this any bigger, it's not gonna really be uh, a good subject. Well, we have the area behind the dump. And then this is, this is town hall, the fire station, and those sections, uh, what do they call it? The sheds behind here? Well, the work buildings that are behind them. That's this. And this next piece is actually the school chabot and the roof. So one of the reasons I, I said, well, why don't we go and look at the roof, because when I first talked, spoke with them, there was an idea of doing carports. And they're waiting on the information, maybe Kathy. Uh, they're waiting on the information to come back from uh, the state's meat program, plumbing program, I don't know. So there's a new plumbing program and that is, that would not, there's top that's not gonna be carports.
You don't think you want to know about solar, see if it's gonna sensitize the inner power point? Because the, we generated a bill on our solar versus commercial gas coal fire, if we can put the coal fire.
Awesome.
Yeah, unless, unless the subsidy is off, if Fort Carolina puts the subsidies off, after ten years, but now if you're buying that, it's gonna cost you more than that.
So, you know, we're doing it because.
Even after installation?
Cause the generator steps is cheap.
And then the uh, the fourth piece here is the section behind the uh, behind the dump. And a couple of things that we found out were that this could be done in conjunction with the pollinator pathway up there. So, and it would say would be a huge fan of, because apparently there's certain um, pile of flowers that they can put out and they grow just to a certain height, perfect for the solar fields. And um, that's one of the solutions that this particular company has, has done in the past. They can do just about anything, um. We thought that the, the slope that exists there is, would be detrimental, but it actually would make it so that you wouldn't see it. Like it would be really hard to see this uh, solar field, especially with the land. This area right here is the land trust, is currently a land trust. So this is the dump. That's the dump, transportation station. This is all vegetation, this is where they wanted to put the trail. They wanted to bring it up through here and around here and then back. So one of the things that we would be able, that we could talk about then is doing the trail around it, the four trails. Um, a-again, there's, there's infinite number of opportunities to think ahead, plan ahead, this is gonna be done tomorrow. But we need to decide tonight whether or not we would take this, um, we would take this idea and bring it to the select. And we're bringing it to the select, uh, for the September Selective Meeting as a recommendation, consideration. Basically, all we're doing is telling them that, you know, here's a proposal, not a proposal, but an idea. Um, that was presented, this were the findings.
Presented by whom?
The company is Santa Energy.
Okay, and they, they approached you?
They approached the town, Barbara then approached me to have the conversation.
Okay, that is the first time, yeah.
I brought it up in last month's meeting.
Okay.
Santa Energy. So the idea would be that, you know, they, they just got this uh, this document back from me today.
Okay.
And for this meeting, uh, and I said, all we do is. Get information and give it this. We have to see if this is something that we want to explore. Uh, and then they would come and present it, so we're not misinforming anybody. You know, I told them, I said, the last thing that we want to do is get in the middle and, you know, not translate it correctly. So the idea is to, to see, and I think we should do this soon, I'd like to push it for this reason. If they come up, the faster we tell them, uh, they're gonna be at the Selective Meeting. The faster they're gonna come up and actually walk that route, because Russ and Barbara apparently walked that route. And they said it would be really hard to put, because there's all those slopes up there, to put something on, put something up there. So if that's truly the case, then we should reconsider what's going on with the land trust. And before, so they can make their decision.
Okay.
If we can do this, uh, then we should figure out the design. And then again, reach out to the land trust to see if we can still make it an extension. So if you're gonna do a one mile loop, you just stay on land trust land, if you wanted to do a three mile loop, you can walk around the solar field. Or something like, I don't.
Does land trust leave, totally surround the?
No, it's.
You don't have that.
The land trust land is right here. Do that line? Do that line?
Oh, you can.
So all of the, all of the steel companies are moving to, it's right here, this line.
Okay.
This is land trust, this is Roxbury.
This, this is the, the dump?
The dump is right here.
Is this piece fine?
No, the, the, the blue, everything in the blue is Roxbury on land.
Okay.
Okay, I think this right here is the transfer station.
Okay.
Amanda, um, when you're training, so. I know we should respond in a friendly way. Um, and I, I know who just wants to do this, and I think it's a lot of them that want to get trails and, um, if you have a real wish for the answer?
No. No, I just think that, you know, they, they had asked us, we thought that this was something that we wanted to explore. And we can, if somebody else has time to explore it, to see the feasibility of it, um, great. And then I don't see any reason to draw it out.
Could you make a motion, please, that, 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 and before we stop?
Well, I, I made a motion that we make a, a recommendation to the board of selectmen to have it on their September agenda. And have the professionals come out and prepare a presentation. Um, I'm sure that the board of selectmen would require a proposal, a request for a proposal. You know, but again, if we can, they, they'll be able to put up the, the, the study and put together the information. I think we should take advantage of that, and they're pretty confident, they were doing, they're, they've been doing this all along, the town board. And towns like Roxbury, the, it's, it's interesting, and having a couple of conversations with folks, they don't understand what Roxbury is. It's just a drawing out a map for them that they might look at in satellite. Um, that, that CPAC guy could have tell you where Roxbury was. Um, but he was pushing hard to get in. So we, the whole, the whole point of this is, is just saying, okay, we have an opportunity here, it, it could be bigger than just the catsoa field. So Kathy, I don't know if you saw this, but this is a plan of, of putting um, putting panels out of the school. And this would be the town hall and the workshops here. So again, it's, it's bringing, it's bringing power to Roxbury. So the, this is a division of Santa Energy. Uh, and yeah, this is what they're looking specifically at. Uh, and everybody knows where Brown Field is. So Brown Field is that there's some kind of contaminant in the soil where you just can't, there's some remediation that would have to be done in order to use it effectively. Gonna be capping, whatever. Um, so they're looking at land that probably won't be used or something.
Right.
Uh, and we have that land, and that's why we made the list, and this is what we're trying to do.
Yeah, well, so they come up and they, they're thinking, look at this?
No, that would be their next step, so we go ahead and recommend this to the board of selectmen. That would be one of the things that they'd have to do before that meeting, is walk that land.
Okay, if they come up, I mean, I think that, they, they come up, they're walking land, are they aware of the, the issue that?
Verbal, they're aware of challenges.
And the, this, the trade, to take that energy from the solar field and put it back out into the grid?
Yeah, so, but you come down at cost, yeah, and they're very aware of that cost.
Okay.
Uh, they broke it down, again, I'm not gonna regurgitate it just because I don't want to misrepresent it. Uh, it's expensive. It's really expensive to, to, like, a couple of hundred bucks a mile. To change the main liner, the three phases.
Yeah.
And just bring it up and around the corner. That's why if you use, if, if the land trust allows us to use that straight cut path, it would greatly reduce the cost of this project. This is a twenty-five year project, it would be, the lease, the land lease would be thirty thousand dollars a year. Uh, the solar dis, the this, the power discounts would be estimated at twenty thousand dollars a year, so you're looking at fifty thousand dollars a year. For twenty-five years, looking at a million two five. All right, so it's, it's a lot less than like, what? But because they pick up every dime for this project. So they're paying for it. Twenty-five years down the road, I don't know what the leases look like, I'm sure they have some kind of ability to extend these. But at some point, the leases and extended, and we want to do something else, we also improve the power grid a couple of blocks, you know?
With it, with this, this energy that's produced with. Where do we go, do we go back to the grid or do we go to power, town building?
No, it goes back to the grid. All of this is to go back to the grid, and then the town will get it, that's that second pop up.
It's me and the first substitution. You don't know if you're gonna do that. You're looking at that. You remind me when we were about that previously, and if I hear the few leases, the responsibility to mobilization of the solar field or the proportion of the solar field.
You have, you have this as a proposal, thank you?
Yes.
Can, can you send the rest, the rest of it?
Yeah, we'll send it, we'll send it there and sure, uh, distributed with them.
Okay.
They're doing, they're, they're. So they're gonna go ahead and sell this, this.
You have any idea where they, um, they're turning for ground, thank you?
You mean, if, if they're a reputable company?
Well, I said, no, I mean, uh, to what, uh, to financial benefits, not to change anything, what they're willing to do.
They're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna sell it for something else.
Yeah.
Gotta sell the line back to the grid.
So that one.
They're gonna sell the energy back.
Oh, yeah, they're, well, that one point, two five was, yeah, yeah.
But they're spending a lot of the money.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, that's what I'm like, you pay, tell it back to the grid, like, all, everything else, and I'm like, I don't even doubt these, because you can go, I'm, you know, like. Run their brain off, they're all solar, like. I know it's not, but I'm like, he told me soon.
Yeah, but, but the next piece is, what, what will this spark? Right in the first. Yeah, well, well, yeah, to me, it's, it's inertia. Right, and then looking at other.
Yeah, I got, Kathy, I think you have to look at it as, and they've got a infrastructure already, there's an infrastructure that's just this. That, you know, they have access, they built it out, so, yeah, they're gonna make money, but they have a capital, massive amount of capital.
They have a staying.
Yeah. The grid is.
I wonder what's happening down there, maybe they'll be.
Yeah.
Interested to know.
Yeah, I, I know that a couple of, one of, this was one of their solar fields, we got some of that.
No, I mean, what sounds if they set up this kind of?
You should, you should do a practice, it's still construction.
Exactly.
Jason, I have a question too, he said earlier that solar can't compete with.
Uh, kill a lot of hour generating.
So how is, how is Santa Energy gonna make money, solar can't compete with? What's that?
With their subsidy, I don't know.
Oh, that makes sense.
Yes, in what the current, if the current administration, we have the structure bill, all the knowledge of the structure, we can see some of the subsidies prepared by solar.
I see, okay.
Water is much more of a contract. Whereas you know, you have, you have to, the towers on, the, the, yeah, they started the company.
So, I mean, it's, it's again, inertial, something to talk about, you know, will it attract people to Roxbury? I think it's, I think it's better than a cap.
Doesn't it?
It's, it's better than doing the.
It is, absolutely, it's better than doing that, I know for sure.
So, um, and again, we got a little bit of improvement to the, the few houses. So, um, and again, we got a little bit of improvement to the, the few houses, we'll get a, our, uh, power stuff. And again, if, we can see what else would fit in this, okay, this, this stuff doesn't happen in the vacuum, if, if it goes past the selectmen. So I'm gonna go bring a motion one more time, uh, I make a motion that the Conservation Commission, um, Request time, um, the, that's, you know, this September Selectmen's meeting, the Board of Selectmen's meeting, uh, to hear a proposal from, uh, Santa Energy in regards to the facility project.
I make a motion.
I'll second.
All right, everyone in favor? Any opposed? Any further discussion? Motion absent. All right.
I'll be doing this later, if you're open.
I want this one. Are you looking for that?
Yeah, I'm looking for one. In the, I think it's up there.
I think it went to.
Yeah, we've got. It's very moving.
One step, south, max, it just keep on.
Not western.
Any, it, it has to be, they said, for it to be feasible, it has to be at least two megawatts. I think it's more than two megawatts. It's currently not. It's possible to be.
Yeah.
So, Kathy, when you hear when the last time the, the Conservation Commission looked at it, and one of the issues was that the company went belly up, and town was gonna have to fund the money or something like that?
You're on one issue.
But that's the, that is the benefit with a company like Santa coming, is that, again, they're.
Who do they lay it to Santa to do?
That is Santa.
Bear out.
All right. Back to the agenda.
Uh, that's the Roxbury.
Okay, so the Roxbury Land Trust, um, reviewed the minutes of our last meeting, and sent a formal request to have the meeting minutes adjusted. Uh, specifically in regards to the, the comments that were made about Roxbury Land Trust, and they're, um, and not considering working together or using the land for, um, or to bring the power to Roxbury. So, we had a little bit of background, and then at the end, that, well, just let you know, these minutes, these meetings are recorded. So you can go back to the, the, the meeting that was recorded, where Roxbury Land Trust did say that they were not going to, um, go forward with this, and the reason why. And, and I haven't heard back from them since. But at this point, uh, we're gonna keep the minutes as they are, because in fact, they didn't want, all we asked of them was that they have a conversation with us to see if, discuss the feasibility. And we weren't asking them to commit anything, and they, and that didn't happen, that was obviously negative. So, um, so at this point, we're gonna keep the minutes the way they are, but we're open to have a conversation with them, if they do want us to, uh, to continue the revision of that.
What, what, what specifically did they request?
I, I can read, would you like me to read you?
Well, I'm, I'm wondering, are they, we had, we had said that, we made it a dichotomous choice, we went ahead with this, brings it to a trail, but it would include the opportunity to control it. But they objected to that sort of binary or dichotomous?
What's the, either what? What if they wanted Eric to see your, your property?
We wanted to discuss, Kathy, the feasibility of running the power line. True. Uh, this is the official letter here. Uh, sorry. Okay, the Conservation Committee requested that Roxbury Land Trust allow a solar field power line be dug through Roxbury Land Trust's program reserve. But we never requested that it be dug through, we discussed the conversation, see if there's any way to do this. Uh, Roxbury, and this was exactly what we didn't want to do, we didn't want to have one person report, and that would be a one-sided conversation, and then misinformation be, um, you know, that, that was just an idea. Anyways, uh, Roxbury Land Trust invited the RSC to join us, and requesting from the Board of Selectmen permission to create a trail along the middle of town land, or I wrote in a picture earlier. Uh, this trail would lead to the historic former Bronson property, which the Bronson family named Roxbury Land Trust, uh, for would preserve. Roxbury Land Trust's request is to create a trail only, this would still allow the town property to be fully available for any townable product. Uh, including Roxbury Commission's own use for walks events. Uh, the minutes say, Roxbury Land Trust updated regarding the town's own property behind transfer station. They, Roxbury Land Trust would not entertain a conversation to allow solar field power through their property. They asked them to commission, but still support them converting that land into additional preserve or extension of a preserve. If we do not support this, it closes off the possibility for the town to use the adjacent, uh, land as its solar field.
Okay.
Does anybody feel that was a misrepresentation of the conversation?
But, no, that's what we talked about.
Right.
But, yeah, that's exactly what we talked about, but then, I, I was wondering, are they objecting to this, our, our saying that, no, it doesn't, we said it would include.
They're, they're asking us to change, uh, the language that says that Roxbury Land Trust was unwilling to entertain.
You're like, have a conversation, darling. So they're saying, yes, they were not, but, well, they're not, you know, okay, we're, so they don't want to be betraying those unmuted existence. It's unmuted, just to, but then just, yeah, that's what happened.
And I, now I'm sure that it was, it was a telephone game, and that's why we all needed to be in the same room. So if they bring it back up again, we can, again, we're still open to have, we're still open to have a conversation, we'd love to work with them on this thing, and many others, it just makes sense. The Conservation and Land Trust work together, um.
Do you hear the point? That's a communicating with the land trust, that we look like this is our, our, because I mean, to help the town move, so.
Well, I think that right now, seeing if this solar project has any legs, or else there's, you know, because there's a possibility that there's nothing to talk about.
Exactly.
You can just make a trail of it.
Perhaps say, perhaps say in the note, that it would wake them up, that we need to, if they're doing that, that they're doing this.
I, I would hope, again, I would hold off until we have actual information, because I, I don't look up the word if we don't, I don't want to talk about things that I don't know the details on.
You know, welcome to the computer.
Yeah.
Now, I mean, we get those non-understandable Roxbury news.
This is open to public.
Right, exactly. Um, but yeah, I mean, welcome to come here, I would love to talk to you. No, I'm, I'm just saying that, yeah, it is, it is, it's, it's, again, just so it's, I don't know.
They, they could certainly, we're, we have a lot of money.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely, once we have, once we have findings, I think we should get together, I just don't know, are you saying that to try to have a joint meeting before we have?
No, 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 you're asking.
Absolutely.
I'm saying, the thing that we would want to talk about, and what's going on with the feasibility of the solar project, just to kind of foster the law and spirit, that's all.
Absolutely. I, I think that's, that was the whole point, that's, again, the cloud that I made earlier, it was sense of why we should just see if it has legs, so we know which way to go with the Roxbury land.
And I'm just suggesting, a communication is required, whether, you know, if there's, like, if, if it's, that if it's feasible, we want to, and, 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 like you said, I, like you said, I, the way to get more, the rate. I'm saying, it's not something that's saying that once we have more of the patient, we are willing to speak with them, to be registered.
I think we can just give them enough of what we're doing, and say, hey. Yeah.
Yeah. They're obviously watching you.
Minutes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we are.
I mean, I'm lucky still, I, I mean, they're both, they're all, they're the same, great of ideas, talk to them.
All right, so we will, gotta communicate, maybe ensure the minutes tonight with them, and say, hey, just let it know we're moving along with this, so that we can get to.
Get up, get up.
Get up big. All right, it is the top of the hour, uh, so quickly, uh, unfortunately, Susan, who's, she's, well, she realized that her life is a lot busier. She really wanted to be an active, uh, board member, she has a sentence written on, so we do have another, that position.
That's the off-year.
I, I don't know the Roxbury.
Oh.
So it's a trip in the, a trip in the pack of watching the Roxbury, there's water, so we're here, and it's called a school system, like, in Washington, and I'm right on the board, which still know the process, and I close K through two. I have, and I have no kid, it's in K through two, and I manage, and I manage counts.
So. You ever just had? Um, so, you know, if you think of anybody in that, for the meetings, uh, and, and there is a chance, tonight was almost made it, I could put the Zoom meeting, uh, it was just a little bit last bit of notice. Uh, so we will, uh, most likely to cover, unless we do the cap, you know, um, which I, that would be perfect, uh, way to.
I can link that to the, to the, I know the second.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'll, if I can, if I can, if I can.
I know Netflix, um, expressed interest in you, so that, I, I, I don't really know.
And again, invite, uh, invite volunteer, many hands make my work, and as we're doing this, I think October is gonna be a great, uh, um, a month for us, for visibility, uh, we, we have ideas for next year, uh, uh, I got ahold of Woodbury's, uh, quarterly newsletter, they do a newsletter, and maybe we can do a quarterly newsletter, not now, about, uh, sometime in the future, um. And again, distribute it through the senior center, and all that stuff, and, and give it something that's very feasible. And again, my vision has always been, and I hope it survives way past me, that the Conservation be the door that people can walk through, very easily to get a bottle of town, we have one of the best towns that I could ever imagine living in. Um, we just want to go ahead and get people the ability to be active in it, and, and actually take a part in keeping Roxbury the rural, rural, oh, I'm sorry, rural town. Rural character of Roxbury. So, um, the other thing I wanted to quickly mention was, we're looking at things to do after that house, so we got the momentum, uh, Aaron?
Uh, so I thought we could do for, uh, November, it's the holiday for feeders, um, so to spend this series, because we have, you know, it's close for the old, it's almost, that's been going on many, long years. Um, so I thought we could do, like, one, like, education, be on, there's probably, you can start with people, you know, being, you know, that. Then I thought we could kind of write down my inner science here, we could look at, like, what's the current, what do we do, and what's forcing us for the other to pass, because, so it's actually doing different things, we follow the book, and I really want to be spent, and I follow the book, uh, it all, but we're doing, like, that, I do. So, um, it's really cool to know what to be doing, things, so, um, I thought we could just do, kind of, something like that, and maybe we could have a lecture or something, um, something like that. Uh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know, it's, it's, I'm, I'm, you know, then, you know, I mean, it's, it's, I don't know, is that what you're saying? It was, it was.
We'll take you something like that.
Well, that's, that's, it's, it's a good thing.
And then there's, uh, the one other thing is that there are different grant programs that are out there, but one thing I don't want to do is, is apply for grants when we don't know what we're gonna use them on, for, um, because it takes it out of the system. Um, so with that being said, one other thing that we could do to support the poll and the pathway, so if we did the bird feeders in November, and in December, we, we figured out how we can get packets of wildflower. Maybe we can buy wildflower and bull.
Oh, um, the nursery, uh, the yam is, it's, it's, well.
Maybe we can actually get the senior center involved, see if they're not ready to senior center, or want to package these things, and then we could hand them out.
I think, I think the, the better bet is to get the, uh, garden, the, 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 because they, they, yeah, they've already, they've already had a lot of they have a lot going into this, and, um, I think plants, they, they got, you know, fourteen or fifteen people signed up going to pollinate the plant. And people who grew pollinator, that, you know, they're invaders, where they are selling. Uh, they got four or five people.
So, again, we're at ideas, and, you know, what, you know, what's, what's our money where our mouth is?
So I'm getting you to use something that's clear, and, uh, let's say, it's probably gonna happen in the spring, but that's what we do.
Oh, we never got out of the education, just remember that, so we, we can use it for the educational portion of it, I don't think giving stuff away would be the right use for it, or like, we have to revisit it?
Yeah.
You know, we want to stay true to the spirit. Yeah, but we have a budget too, so. So, you know, would that be like a cold, kind of, Christmas thing to do?
It goes without the thought.
You can even make, like, um, put seeds in the cards, like Christmas cards, and just play out the part, you can, or you do, like, paper and a chain, but, um, seeds here, and play that, you can write, Merry Christmas, and then play it in the fall, in the spring.
Well, I've talked to, I've talked to my wife, but it's, uh, made it, when you're saying completed, nearly canceled. They have to be cold stratified, there's a whole process to go through, so, I don't, you know, sounds good, but.
Okay, magic, wild part of that. But we can, we can, we can get the experts in here, and then we could, um, you know, the idea is, in come Christmas time, we want to give something away, that we can promote in the spring. You know, just, let's get the people to know the information in the room, and then can kind of go with that. But first, we gotta decide if that's something we want to do, or does anybody have a thought of it?
I think it's something we want to do, I'm not sure that doing it early on, like, in December, that's a, too, too early, you know, with this people. People start thinking about spraying once to get past the first of the year. That's my only, that's my only concern, and I, I think it's a good idea, it's pretty, it's fine.
Well, it has to focus in the world, there's something that can get started, that needs time to rule.
Right, well.
Well, I'm saying, it.
You know?
Yeah.
We, we could coordinate the, the program, we could see channels, because people.
Seed gather up somewhere, like.
That's what you're saying, right, I think, for us to get everyone ready, all, to be prepared to, to simulate, and see what happens.
Well, I was saying, for Christmas, they, if, if, if they have the Christmas bizarre here event, a lot of people come through that, and maybe we can say, hey, here's a little gift from the Conservation Committee, you know, planted in there, we can take donations for more plants to be distributed in, in the fall. And there's a lot of ideas. Tonight's not about figuring out what, answering the idea, tonight's about just saying, I mean, we're gonna focus on the October. After that, we really need to, well, we have to have something on the back burner, so that in November and December, we don't lose it.
I like the idea of bringing December with birthday. I like the idea for November as a birthday, hopefully during the farming community. All to be like, when you're a donkey. And I'd like to like, recognize the farms that are providing those, the, the, uh, people are in fact, they're called, we, you know, I don't I don't know, we're out there, Buster, but we know who they're making a great meal, we want to give them. Let's, we could bomb the birds back to December and the farming area, on the area. Keep his top, because if they cancel their trap, they may have issues, and things, they're just down on that. And I think it would be great, so we'll I don't know, I was throwing it out there, you know?
Well, finally, they
And maybe one of the things we can do is actually put together a local catalog, CSA virgin catalog.
Where local farms are, like, people like to drive, maybe where a market thing is doing. Wow, because that's always something that I'm like, where are they just driving to that? They could do like, maybe like a cult or something about the old barns and salt or things, like, a little like
Oh, like, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. A little library, where you could go and, you don't want to do the story, the walk, where you go on the trails and you get all these clues and you figure it out and you send it to the website or something, you get a prize, and you could go to like, all the local farms, the Roxbury Conservation Commission will, you know, give you like wildflowers or something like that, if you, I don't know. I don't know, you just call to me and
Yeah, okay. I have no problem with that. So what we're doing, so we're talking about November being the harvest time. And then, uh, and and then we'll move December instead of trying to do something with plants.
We're going to do that, birthing too, like good quality, like a good balance, bring up the ready. And we can do like, we can do educational pieces to it, like this kind of seed will bring me this seed, and because
I like it.
I know.
Alright. So on a high, on a high note, I'm gonna ask for a motion, uh, for being a I don't know. I don't know, I go to a lot of meetings.
I've just never heard it.
I just saw it, made a motion to a meeting, like, uh, eight thirteen.
Second, yeah, second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Alright, any opposed, Danny? Sarah? Mason, thank you so much for joining.